And start recording in about 10 seconds.
Okay.
Um, are we ready?
I, okay. Good evening, welcome to the Westford Public Schools School Committee meeting for Monday, June 1st. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 and I will see if there is any public comment. I see attendees are just joining us, so there's no rush. Just as a reminder, Zoom etiquette, if you're not talking, please mute so that we have a better chance of hearing those who are speaking. And for attendees that are growing in number exponentially, please use the Q and A function in the Zoom meeting to ask questions. And as we have before, we will field those questions as we can typically with the subject on the agenda. But if there's general questions, also feel free to put those up and we will try to get those answered throughout the meeting. Are there any, now that we have, looks like the bunch of attendees have loaded, are there any questions for public comment in the attendees? Again, please use Q and A if you have a question. If not, I'm going to let Superintendent turn it over for some very impressive recognitions.
Thank you. As some, as you and our residents of town know, we, we have been ranked for two years in a row now in the school system in Massachusetts. And that doesn't happen by accident, it happens because of dedicated staff in the classrooms with children every single day. People who come to work with what you've heard me mention is the eight Ps of preparation, pride, professionalism, every day, in every way, passion, patience, persistence, personality, and performance. And this is a year that is, is very difficult and the, our inability to honor our students at the end of the year, but also equally importantly, our inability to appropriately honor our staff in person as we have for so many years in the past. So tonight, we've asked the following staff to attend. Donna Pustana, Donna cannot be with us tonight, but has 24 years of service as a teaching assistant. Melissa Hanson, 22 years as a teaching assistant. Donna Condon, 21 years as a grade three elementary teacher. Ruth Freeman, 21 years as an elementary grade five teacher. Kobe Helleck, who couldn't be with us, 20 years as an elementary teacher in the multi-age program at the Navnasa School. Jackie LaMajory, 20 years as a teaching assistant in the preschool program. Kathy McDonald, 20 years as a math interventionist. Valerie Lohman, 18 years, could not be with us tonight as a librarian. Christine Lewis, 18 years as a teaching assistant. Cheryl Saterio, I just saw at the office this morning, 16 years as a preschool teacher. Donna Breen, 15 years as an elementary teacher in grade three. Donna Burkett, who could not be with us, 14 years as a teaching assistant. And Danielle Casino, 13 years as a teaching assistant. To all of you who are retiring, cannot thank you enough for years of dedication and devotion to the children of this school system. You have made our school system what it is today. Plunge ranks every single year. And you've been contributors and very responsible. And I'll turn it back to Avery, I cannot thank you enough and wish you the happiest and healthiest retirement, which could be with us in person, so we could all give each other a big hug. Wish it was without masks, but you've been wonderful contributors. And so Avery, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, well, I see a couple of them have joined us on the screen. Ms. Cheryl, who my child had in preschool, I can't believe. And I see Danielle and Jackie. And anybody, I'm just, oh, there's Ms. Freeman. Hi, Ms. Freeman. Would any of you like to say anything? As you come online, I see, whoa. Feel free, if you'd like to say something, we can't thank you enough for your years of service. As I said, my, my kids have had some of you and it's very bittersweet to see you retiring. It means I'm getting old. Hi, go ahead, Ruth.
I would like to just say that it's been a pleasure to be a part of the Westford community for these 21 years. I thoroughly enjoyed being a member of Abbott. My best friend and I are retiring together tonight. Donna and I started together in August of 1999 and I've made many lifelong friends and it's a pleasure to be doing this together. So I know that Westford will continue to be a model of wonderful school system and I wish the families I've met over the years the very best.
Thank you for your done, Ruth.
Does anybody else, Cheryl? I think Donna is also on there. Hi, Cheryl.
Hi, I just, I want to say how grateful I am that not only did I have this experience being a teacher in such a wonderful system, but also it was just wonderful. My daughters both went through the Westford Public Schools, graduated from the Westford Public Schools, and I am eternally grateful for all that the school system and the town has offered. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks.
I wish you could all be here in. Jackie or Donna, either of you have anything? No? Scott has something he would like to share. Is there? Chris, can we put Scott up? Scott, did you want to say something? You've raised your hand.
I don't know how I did that, but I'll say something, congratulations.
You don't know how you raised your hand?
No, but I'll figure it out now.
Hi, Donna, did I see your hand up down there? Do you want to? We're sorry you can't be with us in person tonight, but thank you for all your time with the, with the town.
Oh, thank you. It's been a great experience. I love being in Westford. I've loved my, as I call them, my kids. My peers have been amazing, my administration. It's, it's been a wonderful 21 years, lots of ups and downs, mostly ups. So I just want to thank everybody too.
Thank you very much, Donna.
And I know Ruth is trying to get on, some of us were having trouble with Zoom because we're used to Google Meet. And I know Danielle Casino and a couple others, we're going to try to get on tonight too, but it's, our Zoom is just not doing what it needs to do.
Well, Danielle's joined us.
Oh, perfect.
And so has Jackie and Donna.
Oh.
And Ruth.
Oh, good, good.
We have, we have the whole gang here.
Great.
But if anybody have anything else they want to say to these wonderful teachers? I see Megan's hand.
I just want to say that it, this is a tough job and so to dedicate that many years of your life to doing this and doing it with passion and creativity and dedication every single day for the kids is so, so appreciated. And I've had the pleasure of experiencing any of you in my own school community with my own kids. And I know that all of you do this because you truly love what you do and love the kids and love being at school every day. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just got another note that Zoom had an update and so some people are struggling to get online. So we will wait and see if anybody else, I haven't seen anybody, Chris, anybody else joined us?
No, I think we've invited everybody that's popped up in the list that I can see.
Okay. All right. Nobody else? All right. Well, thank you again, teachers. You're welcome to stay on and, and watch us give updates. Bill, I think you're up with the superintendent update if we're done with these wonderful teachers.
Yes, thank you. I did send out today another update. This was my third or fourth update to the community about the progress on the COVID-19 situation and our school year and expectations. The commissioner is expected to have a conference call tomorrow with all superintendents across the state. At that time, I expect that he will be talking about summer programming, extended year programming as it's otherwise known. The commissioner does expect around the middle of this month to be providing school systems guidance on the opening of the next school year. As you know, we are, we are planning for that right now. We have a committee in place. We just, we're waiting for the guidance from the commissioner. We don't want to go too, too far at the present time, such that we don't have to reverse direction based on what he has to say. So I do think that the models that will be on the table for consideration are a full return to school. I'm, I'm honestly doubting that. Full remote or a hybrid model of both in-school and remote education. And I do think that there will be some form of hybrid model that will be proposed. That presents the most challenge, challenging situation to us, not only from logistical and staffing perspective, but also from a financial perspective. How many staff do we use to educate students in the building? How many do we devote for remote learning? What will our transportation look like? What will our fee collection look like? What impact will that be on the operating budget that might be needed to support reduction in bus fees? There are so many, so many complicating factors that we are talking about, looking at and trying to analyze as thoroughly as possible. So stay tuned, keep providing updates as they come out. But I want to thank once again, since we're in the last two years, last two weeks, excuse me, of the school year, every school system in Massachusetts has to do a quick turnaround in March and in April. And I want to thank the staff again for, for their hard work in really stepping up to the plate to, to educate students in a way that many of them are unfamiliar with. They've done a fine job, excellent job. I want to thank the parents too, because it has been extraordinarily difficult on everyone, particularly those working parents who are struggling with spending some online time with their child while having work responsibilities. So we can't thank you enough. We know how hard it has been for you and we greatly appreciate your patience and understanding. And that is it.
Bill, can I just ask, I saw that the governor, that EEC released their documentation. Did that give you any glimpse into what could be coming down for DESI?
Not really, because it's a, it's a whole different set of requirements, but I, I wouldn't be surprised to hear the commissioner say that there will be extended year programming, summer programming, particularly for students receiving special education services. You know, we'll have to engage, I'm sure, in appropriate distancing and masks. You know, one of the things we've been talking about is how difficult it will be for, even in the regular school year, for children to maintain a mask during the course of the day. We, we just don't think it's sustainable. And so all sorts of complicating factors, but I don't think that gave us a lot of clue in terms of what's going to happen. I do think it's kind of a prelude to say, yes, we will have some limited summer programming, but we need more details on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the committee for Bill?
Question on the Q and A.
Okay, well, yes, I know. I was asking for questions from the committee while I look at that one. Thank you. Gloria has her hand up.
Bill, Bill, thank you for that update and I, I fully respect that you do not want to get out ahead of waiting for more guidance from DESI. But is there anything that you can share with the committee and with the community in terms of the composition of the, the committee that's been put in place to look at reopening possibilities? Who's on that committee? What kind of timeline do you think you're working with? What, what criteria are you looking at? I think the community and parents are really just hungry for any information that, that you can share. So anything you could share, even if it's just in terms of what the process might look like and what the timeline might look like, I think would be really reassuring to the community.
Sure. We, we have a team of about 20 administrators, guidance councils, nurses. We have about eight staff members from all grade levels because we want their perspective also. And just in talking with a couple of them, they've had some interesting perspectives on perhaps how to, how to more effectively provide remote learning based on individual skills of the staff. We're looking at about four different areas, teaching and learning, general operations, facilities, in terms of maintenance, cleanliness, disinfecting, and also the last one was hygiene protocols, what we're expecting of staff and students. Somewhat following, although I think we came out with ours first, somewhat following the, the commissioner's assignment to the, they have a 54-person committee in the state and how they're ever going to come out with decisions with a 54-person committee is, is beyond me. But our timeline is, we've already started some preliminary conversations with the leadership team. Once we get a little bit more guidance from the commissioner, we're going to involve everyone else because then we'll know which way we're going. We're going to meet throughout the summer. We're going to have to. We're going to provide you with periodic updates in terms of what we're uncovering for information, given the different models, what we can expect in terms of logistical issues, personnel issues. As you said, hygiene protocols for all of the staff and the students. What happens to transportation? Are students, are parents going to be willing to put their, their children on buses? What we're doing right now is we're developing a survey to send out to parents to try to determine if they would feel comfortable putting their child on a bus, if they would be comfortable sending their child to school, or whether they would prefer to continue with, with remote learning. You know, one of my updates, I indicated that this, you know, this both, when it comes to change and this basically associated with innovation, there's incremental change and there's disruptive change. What we've, what we've been exhibiting here is disruptive change, but I do think that this will, will change some trends in public education over the next five to 10 years. Can't tell you precisely in, in what direction, but I do think there'll be more, more remote learning. I think school systems will have to adapt to that. It will be a challenge budgeting for that. So if there's anything else you, you know, you would like to know right now, I'd be glad to answer it, but we're looking forward to fully diving right into it and it's a challenge. We look forward to the challenge, but then the discomfort factor comes from what the commissioner said last week and that is, we're going to have to learn to live with ambiguity and that is very uncertain. So we'll do, we're going to do our best.
That, that's all super helpful, Bill. Thank you. I mean, knowing kind of the, the broad range of people that are on that committee and the different perspectives from nursing to guidance counselors to teachers. I mean, it's, it's super helpful to know that all those perspectives are representative and, and I'm also, you know, glad to hear that we're going to start reaching out to the community in terms of surveying, in terms of what parents' comfort level may be in the fall, whether it's regarding being in the building or busing and, and that's all super helpful information.
And Avery, correct me if I'm wrong, I do believe you asked if a school committee member could participate in those meetings and that's, that's fine.
Yes, that will be on our subcommittee assignments is that I will ask for someone to sit on the reopening committee because I think it's just good to have an ear to that. It just helps sometimes with communication. And I see Alicia has her hand up.
I think we all know what I'm going to ask. Bill, what's the special education representation on that committee?
Well, certainly Courtney is on there and I do believe we have at least one special education teacher.
Okay.
So, you know, in our periodic updates, we'll always be interested in getting your perspective on things and, and whatever information you'd like to share with us or like to hear, hear from us because we absolutely want to make sure. I know we all have a great passion for making sure that every child receives appropriate services, particularly those with special abilities. I hate to call them disciplines, with special abilities. We want to make sure we do our best for the, each and every child.
Okay, thank you.
Megan?
Yeah, I have two questions if you can answer, Bill. So one is, given the difficulties of a hybrid model with regards to teaching staff, neighboring communities, can you speak to how you anticipate the commissioner's guidance with regards to sort of mandated schedules in terms of, you know, if, if it is a hybrid model? In other words, are all communities in Massachusetts going to be having the same days that they are at school or weeks that they're at school or whatever it looks like in conjunction with remote learning? Because I anticipate that not only presenting quite a lot of challenges with teaching staff who have their children in other districts, but also presenting challenges and questions about equity and disparities in learning and benchmarks across the state. So that would be my first question, if you could talk to that.
Yeah, we're, we're not quite sure just yet. I wish you could answer that with more certainty. You know, we are expecting one of the alternatives perhaps to be children in, some in two days, some in three days, some in alternating days, some configuration thereof. That's, that's one of the complexities that we're, we're prepared to deal with and figure out. We just don't know. Ed Davis, the former Boston Commissioner, Police Commissioner, has a consulting firm and he is working with the 54-person team. Ed addressed us last week and, and left it pretty much wide open, Megan, in terms of what's on the table, that they have come with no, no decisions. But I do think certainly the commissioner will give us some structure, some guidance, but he has cautioned us that whatever guidance we receive in the middle of June or thereabouts could change during the course of the summer. So, you know, so stay tuned. You know, I've got an issue that we will be talking about in executive session that has to be addressed as a result of the form of education that we'll have and, and budget issues. And so I'll inform you what I've, what I'm aware of at this point in time and some courses of action that I think we need to take.
And, okay, so thank you. And my other question is more of a curriculum-based question. Given that we certainly anticipate a hybrid model, but know that even if we were to return full-time, that the likelihood of having to access a remote learning plan will crop up again in the future, are we simultaneously addressing, developing a more aggressive, synchronous, robust, whatever, I mean, definitely synchronous, but those other adjectives as well, remote learning plan that, because we have the time obviously to think about it versus what happened now, which we were thrown into it, that addresses more engagement with our students for, for the possibility of that, which, which we would have to access regardless because we may have families or students that even if we do return to a school setting, may choose not to for a whole host of personal reasons. And so I just wanted to know where we are on that, what, if that's a separate committee, I assume that's happening at the same time.
Those will be sort of subcommittee meetings that will be held. We are going to break up into subcommittees and, you know, Carrie will work with the coordinators and the, some of the teachers, some of the teachers will be with us on some logistical issues, but teaching and learning issues will be a, a very important component and a very important subcommittee in terms of taking what we've learned in the last eight weeks, what the state, you know, prescribes. We're wondering if the state will hand us down a curriculum or not, or leave it to the individual, the discretion of the individual communities. So those are all things we'll consider, but we will have a very active subcommittee dealing with teaching and learning.
Okay. Thank you.
I know Chris has a question that I just mentioned. Chris, can you, you had a question?
Sure, yeah. It just, something Megan that said made me think of this and I realize this doesn't buy us a lot, but is there, would one of the things on the table be to look at the middle school time on learning? And I know we have the option of doing 990 or 900 and would going 900 give some flexibility next year? Not looking for a big discussion on that, but throwing that out as something that might be a consideration to just ease a hybrid model.
We don't know yet, Chris, whether or not the time and learning requirements will be restructured. I don't think it makes a big and will make a big difference if we went from 990 to 900, which is the elementary, you know, a number of hours. Those, that's part of the discussion with the 54-person team. You know, all sorts of looks at, do we, you know, do we once again engage in a waiver of the number of school days, number of school hours? What's, what's the length of the school day going to look like if it's remote? Again, will it be essentially half the equivalent of the full day like the commissioner prescribed this year or will it be greater? So I, I wish, believe me, every superintendent wishes they could answer the questions with more certainty right now, but we just unfortunately are unable to.
Min Chen, you had a question?
Yes, I don't know if my question will be answered in a later section of the financial update, but I do want to bring it up now in case it, it's not being covered at that time. It's like for the next school year's budget, because last week, town manager threw out some numbers, say that the town may be like $3.9 million in the deficit. So one of the thing maybe would be like an adjustment to the, to a town budget and to the school budget. So I don't know, like, are we, have we put any thoughts into that? I know what a school year, what, what budget could look like and then we'll.
Can we table that question until Ingrid's presentation? I think she's got that covered in her year-end projections and what we need to look at moving forward.
Yeah, okay, that, that's fine because the, the item says fiscal '20 updates. So I'm looking.
If you read her package, she did have some indications as to what we were looking at in '21.
Okay, yeah, I, I want to make sure that we got that covered because I want this to go unnoticed.
And, yep, so let, let's hold on because there are multiple pieces to that that we'll cover at the finance update. If there are any, no other questions for Bill on his update, I'm going to let Carrie give her update.
Great. And just to build on that a little bit, we have had some incredible questions from parents, very thoughtful questions. And I know just beyond eager to understand what their child's education is going to look like, there's also planning for whether or not they have to do a week on, a week off in terms of having supervision for their children if they're, if we go, you know, a week at school, a week at home. And so the questions are terrific. It is always a little bit uncomfortable when we have to answer that we simply just don't know yet. But as Bill had mentioned, we definitely don't want to go down a path and realize once the guidance comes out that we've gone in a, a wrong direction. And the commissioner had shared that the restart and recovery plan that will come out is going to be approximately 85% set in stone, which means the, the framework will really be given to us with 15% flexibility. Now, 15% flexibility could feel really big depending on what that flexibility is, or it could feel really restricted and small. So that we, we are anxiously awaiting June 15th. We are, we have learned so much over the past eight weeks. I think it is safe to assume that there'll be some level of the remote learning involved and we're excited to begin planning. I was on with the curriculum coordinators today. There's, I, I don't know that there'll be a plan that has no holes in it, but I'm very excited to work with Bill's committee and, and be part of that to come up with something that's going to be great. And I think that the past few months have been a blessing to help us get some sort of a shotgun approach to professional development on the remote side of things. So it's coming and I, I would imagine right after that mid-June release from the commissioner, we will be up and running with a plan as quickly as possible because we have to plan accordingly, both internally and obviously our families and staff do as well. The commissioner did also provide an update on the high school competency determination. Right now, the MCAS at the high school level is the only MCAS test that is considered high stakes in that students need to pass the ELA, the math and the science MCAS in order to graduate. in that students need to pass the ELA, the math and the science MCAS in order to graduate in addition to meeting the graduation requirements for coursework. So the, the one change that they have already put into place for next school year, because this spring we weren't able to do MCAS, is that current freshmen, sophomores and juniors, which are members of the classes 21, 22 and 23, no longer have to take and pass the science, technology and engineering MCAS. That will be awarded, the demonstration of that knowledge will be based on a passing score in biology or chemistry or physics over the course of their high school career. So we appreciate that flexibility, so they will not need to take the science, tech and engineering MCAS test. ELA and math, as of this point, will still be required, and that is typically taken sophomore year with chances each year thereafter to retake if a student does not pass. And the ELA and math class will be offered to current sophomores who would have been taking it this spring in the winter time of next year. And all of that, like everything else, depends on what next year actually looks like. So that could be waived differently once that gets a little bit closer. But as of this juncture, they plan to just administer the ELA and the math. And then current eighth grade students who will be going into high school next year will be back on track, as of right now, to take the MCAS test. Typically, the science portion is taken at the end of freshman year, because that's when biology is taken. So we plan to just get them back on track. And then lastly, you may or may not have seen, if you have students at the middle school or the high school online, we did originally make our summer reading optional instead of being a requirement. And basically, that determination was due to equity concerns, where the library was closed. Schools, sometimes we lend a copy of certain texts for over the summer, and we couldn't ensure that all students would have access to the texts. But since things are starting to open and stores are starting to open, J.B. Fletcher Library now has curbside pickup, I believe, starting today. We have revisited the issue, and then summer reading for grades six through high school will be, will continue to be mandatory, and communication will come out shortly regarding that. I just wanted to mention it here in the case that there may have been any confusion if somebody had seen that posting previously. So that was under a different set of circumstances at the time, and things continue to evolve.
Carrie, one of the questions that just was posted was about IT needs, and how do we see a potential hybrid remote learning situation impacting our IT needs? Do we, do we have a plan for rolling out the Chromebooks for the incoming freshmen and that sort of thing?
Yeah, we are, everything's going to be on the table. We are waiting to see what school looks like first, and then we will make sure that we supply students with the materials they need to properly access school. So one of the things that we had discussed was to dismantle all of our carts if there's a full sort of remote learning, even if it's every other week, so that all students for this one year have their own device. So we, we really just want to understand what it looks like, then understand where the gaps lie, then create a plan. But it will definitely be part of our building the, the plan so that all students have access.
Have teachers had any trouble with networks and capabilities? Do we need to enhance, you know, make our systems more robust for all of this remote learning?
Things have been working for the most part. We have not had many teachers complain that they aren't able to get on. However, we did make sure that there was some flexibility with what sort of the live times looks like, because not everybody can, has a robust network, especially if they have multiple children who are trying to use devices all at once, because everybody's home and maybe a spouse too, who's home online. You know, in some of our meetings, there is, I'm thinking of one staff member who says that all, everything in the household has to stop, TVs have to be off, like all electronics. Students are not allowed to watch anything where the children in his or her house, and that's when they can do meetings like this. So that might be problematic if we have to go long-term. So I think the length of time that we anticipate any remote portion, that will have, that may or may not have an impact, and then we would look to help remedy that.
Avery, may I just jump in for one second? In the last two weeks, I have had a conversation with Representative Jim Osseo and Senator Ed Kennedy. What I did stress to the two of them is, if we are going to continue with remote learning in any way, shape or form, I think the state needs to look to all communities to provide funding for devices, for a robust internet, but also to make sure that families, particularly those who are not able, for financial reasons, to access are able to have that service. And so that's very, very important, and we're going to keep talking with him about that.
Thank you. That's, that is very important. Any other questions for Carrie? If not, I will ask if school committee has any updates from other liaison subcommittees? Seeing none, I don't believe our students are with us.
Avery, it's not from a committee, but it's something I just, I didn't know really where else to bring it up. I'll make it brief. I, I guess, you know, like, I'm sure many of yours, my heart has been breaking the past week, just seeing what's going on nationwide and seeing the unrest and the pain that a lot of our fellow Americans are suffering, I mean, really by generations and, and by systems of inequality. And it just reminds me that we're responsible for educating the next generation in Westford Public Schools. And we have students from, what, age three to, we could have up to, I think, age 22 or something like that, is that right? And you think about what a range that is and what an opportunity is to, I mean, that's an age during which racist ideas can, can get planted and germinate, and anti-racist seeds can be planted. And, you know, we have such an important role, I think, you know, both in curriculum via, whether it be via civics or social emotional learning, or whatever it may be, and then just by modeling, you know, the modeling that the teachers do on how we treat each other and the modeling that we do by our hiring practices. And the model, and I think the one that I want to bring up was the modeling we do by having our diversity and inclusion team be active. So I just make that, that call and that request that, that team now more than ever be active, and we do whatever it takes to make sure it's a team that's thriving and looking at, again, the systems in place in our schools and making sure they're all they can be.
Thank you for that. I, I think that is truly important at this time, especially. Students are not with us, correct? They have graduated and are onto bigger and better adventures, which takes us to the calendar. Superintendent, I thank you for the memo, and I think we want to just run through and see if there's questions.
Yeah, just prior to the calendar, may I just congratulate Mr. Antonelli and his staff and the class advisors and the, the class officers for planning a graduation that now looks like, according to the Department of Public Health's regulations, can be held with a certain distancing limitation. So it's great planning on their plan. If you'd like me to explain anything about the calendar, I think one of the important points is in preparation for the uncertainty of our next year, we have decided to make the first three days. August 31st, September 1st and September 2nd, professional development days. We can talk about remote learning, transitioning back, we can talk about social emotional readjustment of both staff and students, addressing our technology needs more thoroughly, as I said, professional development in general. We think that will work well. This calendar has been reviewed thoroughly with the leadership team, but also the WEA consultation committee, they like it very much. We were originally looking at the idea of going to school part of the February vacation, but in, in discussions on a couple of occasions with the leadership team and the WEA, we decided to leave the February vacation, since that is where it's important to be cleaning the buildings, disinfecting the buildings in the middle of winter. And so that has remained intact. We now know that September 14th is able to be a school day, since the mayor canceled Boston Marathon. Quite honestly, I'm glad of that, because that would have caused disruption for basically, you know, three Mondays in a row. And that will be a regular school day. We have also, let me point out, on September 3rd, one of the changes that we decided to make also was in that very first week of September. Generally, on that first day that students return, we have a limited number of students return. And we don't, because we have grades six and nine with orientation. Well, this year, the six and nine orientation is going to be remote. And so all students in grades one through 12 will return on September 3rd. There will be a full day of school on September 4th. That historically has been a half-day, but there's a lot of disruption in the school calendar. And so we want to get as many full days in possible. That's Labor Day weekend, and there has to be a little bit of compromise here and there. With that being said, if we, if we have the students and the staff not in school on the national election day and the town election day, we know we wouldn't have the students. Sometimes we would have professional development days, but we've decided to have no school on those days. But if we have remote learning on those two election days, that would allow us to trim two more days off the school calendar and end on June 17th. Now, that's a decision that we could perhaps wait a little bit until we see what the plan is from the state and what we're going to be involved in in terms of educating students. And I would recommend that right now. But just know that as of, as of this point in the middle of the calendar, our last day would be June 21st. But if we have remote learning and we offer that on November 3rd, and then again on May 4th, that could potentially move our end date to June 17th. So we try to put a lot of thought into the calendar, a little bit of flexibility, ability for more professional development at the very beginning of the year. And I'll gladly answer any questions if you have.
Bill, thank you for that. One, two questions, actually. Do we have approval on this or review of this by, as Chris just mentioned, the diversity and inclusion, since they are so key in a lot of the religious cultural observations? Did they give it a once-over? And two, one of the members of the audience noted that we don't need the extended day start on September 8th, because we do not have extended day any longer.
We leave that on there? Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry I missed that one. And thank you for that, that catch.
I see Megan's hand up.
Bill, sorry, you mentioned, if you could just speak a little more about it, the beginning of school and that the orientation days, where normally sixth graders and ninth graders would be alone in the school in those days, that those will be remote. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Well, Jim, Antonelli, Chris Chu and Tim Hislop are developing those plans right now. I'll be glad to, I hope, certainly hope to have more information on that for you for the next meeting. We just made that determination about a week and a half ago, when we finished off the, the calendar. But what they're looking at is probably a video tour of the building, interaction with the guidance counselors online, the class advisors at the, at the high school. So I wish I could be more specific. I will have more specifics for you at the next meeting. In fact, I will ask Jim and Chris and Tim to be with us on June 15th, so they can more thoroughly answer your questions. But that is just in the development stage.
Okay, yeah, that would be helpful, because with the, I know myself, with an incoming sixth grader, there has been a video tour that, at least at Stony Brook, and I, I imagine at Blanchard as well, that Dr. Chu and, and Mr. Mack had produced, that gives a walking tour. But having an older child, I know too, that that first day is, is something special and very different when they are in person. And so obviously, that falls under one of these unknowns of whether we will be in our buildings or remote at that stage of the game. But I would like to hear sort of a little more about that and, and how that will alleviate concerns of those students, because they are big transitions. So that would be helpful. The other point that we considered in that initial discussion, which was fairly recently, is that it's highly likely that only 50% of the staff will be in the building at the same time. So that first day of school for those students transitioning in will be a little bit less chaotic than it normally, normally would if all students, you know, in all grade levels were going at the same time on that first day, too.
Okay.
We'll, we'll be very glad to have them at the next meeting and talk as specifically as possible. They were enthusiastic about it.
And the only other thing I wanted to point out, and this is lovely to think about summer and the end of the year, when, you know, there's so much else on our minds. But this calendar puts the last day tentatively as a half-day on a Monday, which I'm sure many looked at and went, ugh. But it is likely to change, as you said, whether that changes because of those election days being remote or the likelihood of one or more snow days. So just, just to point out for people that are going, well, I'm not going that day, or whatever they might think about a half-day on a Monday, it's probably going to change.
Always an issue, yep.
I saw another hand. Gloria?
Yeah, I, I, obviously, Bill, I know that all of this is in the works. But I, I know one thing that, that's also, that's always really important for our freshmen, especially at Westford Academy on that first day, is just becoming familiar with their route, that how they need to travel through the building is such a challenge for new freshmen. So while a video tour is great, if, if it is possible, of course, you know, social distance permitting and whatnot, to have building tours where those, those freshmen, while they might not have a full day, might have an opportunity to at least be in the, be in the space and walk their route from class to class. I know that always alleviates a lot of stress for our new freshmen if they can kind of have that, that little acclimation, even if it's not a full day, but something, something the week before. I know student council has often helped with that in the past, so, so maybe.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. That's something Jim is definitely looking at. He mentioned that, and using the students as guides. You know, if adults bring the students around the building, they tend not to pay as much attention as, as if other students do. And that's, that's very important.
With, with an incoming freshman, I, I know that the anxiety is.
Oops.
We lost Avery.
You froze, Avery. Well, pending Avery's return, oh, hi Avery, now you're muted.
Sorry, I froze again.
Yeah.
I think we need to take, I need a motion to approve this calendar. Pending any state changes.
So a motion to approve pending, and is that a reflective of state mandate? Or however we want to say that.
Avery, may I just say, with the revision noted, and that is the reference extended day?
Yes.
Oh, right, to remove, as edited.
Right.
Yep.
And do I have a second?
Chris seconded.
Okay, then we'll call Ming Chen.
Hi.
Sean.
Hi.
Alicia.
Hi.
Megan.
Hi.
Gloria.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Hi, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I know people are anxious to get their summer plans in place. Calendar policy, thank you to the policy committee. I know we, we may have had a couple of comments, but nothing too crazy.
Yeah, we've had two public comments so far. The public comment period is still open. I, we, Nina and I communicated back and forth and she graciously agreed to extend that comment period just a little bit longer because we knew we were in this strange remote context, plus we had Memorial Day in the middle. So that public comment period is still open until tomorrow. So if anybody listening does want to take a look at the calendar policy, this is the calendar policy, not the calendar for next school year itself, which we just approved. But the policy revisions would put into place a, a committee that would help with the, with future calendar, calendar developments. So if anyone has comments on the policy, that public comment is still open. Policy subcommittee will take a look at the comments we've received so far and officially respond to those probably next week. And, and then this policy will be up for a final vote at our next meeting on June fifteenth.
Thank you very much. That's, I'd like to see that one get checked off for us this year. Ingrid and Bill are going to tell us about the MOU for activity stipend payments, please.
Yes, we have, I want to thank Ingrid for a lot of time she spent with Betsy Murphy at the high school analyzing what activities have transpired and working out a percentage of payment. Basically, I think this is the schedule that you saw at the last meeting that these, those that you see for seventy-five and a hundred percent of our activities that have had a greater duration. Most others will be at fifty percent of the stipend payment, which we think is very fair and reasonable because some clubs and activities such as the yearbook, et cetera, have continued on remotely. Worked out with Mike Colson and the athletic department, the athletic stipends, the coaching stipends for the spring. The varsity coaches will be paid twenty percent of the stipend. The JV and freshman coaches, five percent because they had far fewer responsibilities. Although there were some responsibilities, they did attend a coaches' meeting that Jeff Bunyan attended and we wanted to compensate them for that. No funding, no stipend for the middle school coaches because it really never, really, nothing was done. But the middle school athletic coordinators, two of them, forty percent of the stuff because they did a lot of preliminary groundwork. But unfortunately, you know, with the closing of sports, we're not able to continue. So everyone is in agreement. We'd like to get them paid quickly because we're running out of time. It did take a little bit of time to get this worked out, but we've worked it out amicably and I think very fairly.
Thank you for that. Committee, are there questions on the stipends? Megan?
I just had a question about the spring club stipends, Bill. Are we, is that a separate item that we're looking at or, or do you want us to talk about? Is everything at once okay?
Everything is, is together.
Okay, so the club stipends, the, the spring stipends that are being paid out at one hundred percent, is that, is it fair to assume that all of those clubs have had continued activity in the remote learning environment? And is that why they are?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. That's all. I just wanted clarification on that.
Yeah, we want to be very careful in trying to analyze. I want to thank Betsy Murphy for all the work she put into this. We went unfair by either underpaying or overpaying someone for some club or activity.
Well, and Megan, just to elaborate, some of these activities also just, most of, or all of the activity was before school closed. There are some clubs that effectively, you know, end at the beginning of March. And so we really did look at the hours and, and the goals of the clubs and did they fulfill the duties or the, you know, the duties and advise their for a certain club.
Okay, thank you. Ingrid, do you by chance know what the total is for what we're looking at paying out for the stipends?
The meeting in my office, this is probably, everything I need is the wrong place. Coaches, it's about thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And the stipends, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have it on the top of my head and I'll email it to you tomorrow.
But I would say in general, it's less than we budgeted for.
It is less, yes. The one difference between the two, the coaching stipends versus the stipends is the clubs are not at the elementary level, but at the middle and high school level. They are offset quite a bit, fees that students pay, the activity fees. Whereas the coaching stipend come primarily from the budget. The athletic fees cover much more the costs of the sports, the transportation, the pools and use, you know, build a pool and, and such. So that's, there is a slight difference there. So the activity fees off the clubs, athletic fees offset the coaching.
Got it. Other questions on stipends? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the MOU for the activity and sports stipends as outlined.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of stipends as listed. Roll call Chris.
Hi.
Ming Chen. You're muted, Ming Chen.
Oh, sorry. Hi.
Sean.
Hi.
Alicia.
Hi.
Megan.
Hi.
Gloria.
Hi.
Hi. So it's unanimous. Thank you, Ingrid. All right, moving ahead to our seven fifty-five item, special education update. I believe Courtney is going to share some things.
I am. Just a couple of quick updates. But before I get started, I'd like to share something that's a little less technical. As we know, COVID nineteen has stopped all of us in our tracks and interrupted many special events. However, on May twenty-fourth, I had the pleasure of attending a Zoom wedding and a reception parade for one of our teachers. So Ms. Sidney from the preschool wasn't going to let COVID nineteen stop her from marrying her fiance, Eric. And what was also special was the many preschool students who also came through the reception parade and had that opportunity to see their beautiful teacher in a bridal gown. And so to Sidney, well done, and congratulations to her. So then a little bit more technical stuff. Our team meetings are underway and going very well. Our student support leaders, along with special education teachers, general education teachers and specialists, have been chipping away at some of our team meetings, primarily the eligibility meetings and those that are important to transition until next year. And as with everything that has to do with remote learning, this has been a new process for the team. So I do appreciate all the patience, the support and the understanding, as well as being thankful for those who have shared some helpful hints and helped to create a smoother process for all of us. We're going to continue to refine our skills related to virtual team meetings because I, I think it's pretty clear to predict or have the assumption that virtual team meetings will continue on into the fall until we're able to welcome more people into our buildings. And so my final update is in regards to the extended year services, otherwise known as summer school services. And at this time, all districts are still prohibited from having students come into the building. Each week, we are waiting for updates from the commissioner as well as the department's special education director, Russell Johnson, who has been providing weekly updates. At this time, our marching orders have been planned for both of them. There's been a little bit of a shift in the language to say that, you know, plan for remote. And once we are being, are told that we can welcome students back into the school, it will be under very specific safety guidelines as well as has to be limited in scope. So we're not just going to open the door and have a hundred kids flood in for summer school services. Now, neither one of those little bullet areas have been defined yet, but I think we all know kind of what safety guidelines look like. Probably wearing a mask or having a shield, having very limited amount of students in one room. And, and, and there are still many guidelines that need to come out as far as toileting students. We have many students that are still in diapers, whether they're in our preschool program or in some of our other developmental programs. So there's a lot of fine details that have not been shared yet. And we are trying to be patient and waiting for more. But for those parents who are really wondering, I, I, I think it's going to be remote. I'm ninety percent sure that most of our services that we will be offering in the summertime will be remote. If we have that opportunity to bring students in, we'll follow the safety guidelines. And we will really target some of the therapies that I feel like we've been missing out on, such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language therapy. And I would love to be able to evaluate some of our students. Typically, we do not evaluate during the summer months because our staff is not on staff. They're, they're not working. And so if we do have the opportunity to bring them in on a one-to-one basis, then perhaps we'll be able to finish off some of the testing that had just come to a screeching halt in the spring and that we haven't been able to do. And that'll help us alleviate a lot of that work that will need to be done in the fall. So unfortunately, this is not how we want to communicate with our families and staff. We want to be able to have a thoughtful plan and we want to be able to say with certainty how services will be delivered. But right now, our hands are tied. So unfortunately, I'm just echoing what Bill and Kerry said previously in that we are waiting for guidance and we will proceed as directed.
Sorry, it took me a second. Alicia, go ahead.
So I'm going to ask a question that I can almost guarantee you don't have the answer to yet. So I know your guidance from the status of spring tomorrow on extended year. Do you have a ballpark idea of when parents will be hearing from their teams as to what extended year will look like for their kids?
So right now, Jane Anderson, who is the coordinator for the summer program, is reaching out and communicating that it's going to be remote. If there's any variability within that, then parents will be notified. But without having that information right now, we, we don't know what the specific guidelines are going to be in terms of what our capacity is, nor do we know what the safety guidelines are going to look like. And so are we prepared? As much as we think, you know, do we need to supply masks? Are kids going to bring in masks? Do they need to be a certain kind of a mask? Can they use a, a shield, especially with speech language pathologists who are working with students who obviously need to be able to see? And children need to be able to see their speak, their therapist speaking. So many, many different things out there. But for the parents, you can count on the remote being available to the students. In some of the out of district placements, they're also in the same boat in just waiting for guidance to make sure that they are able to welcome kids into their, their buildings. I did hear from one individual school today in which they are planning for all remote education. And if they are allowed to interact with students, that individual student, uh, school will go to the child and provide kind of one-on-one support within the home or outside of the home. I, I don't know what, how they're going to do it. But those are some of the other creative things that are, are going to be implemented.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the committee? And I thank Courtney for being so on top of all of this critical services for these students.
Yeah, I was, I mean, just to echo that, just the gratitude for what you and your team have done during this unprecedented disruption. And I know you guys have just had, had to work through things you've never thought about before. And so if there's anything you need from us, let us know other than our patience and everybody else's patience, which you can readily have.
Right. And, and I think that with everything, you know, the anxiety goes up and we're like, how do we do this? Because we've never done it before. But once we kind of dip our toe in the water, I think that's one of Kerry's sayings that she uses a lot, we get more comfortable with what we're doing and can refine. But I need to say that also that the parent response to our, to understanding kind of where our barriers are have been great. For the most part, so understanding of what we're trying to accomplish. And honestly, we would not be able to be doing what we're doing right now if every single one of those parents were insisting on having over two hundred meetings within a very short period of time. So we're very thankful for that partnership as well.
Thank you, and thank you to parents for the patience. If there's no other questions for Courtney, I think we're going to move to Ingrid and the financial update. And I think, Ingrid, you already heard a little bit of Ming Chen's question. And I'm sure that you will wrap some of that into what we're about to dive into.
All right, thank you. I wanted to give you an update where we are in 2020. And as Ming Chen alluded, it is very, very intertwined with twenty-one. I don't think that there's any way to draw a definitive line between the two fiscal years because decisions we make in twenty fundamentally will affect what our financial situation looks like in twenty-one. And I really think that we need to be just very transparent. And I have given you my recommendations and I'm happy to discuss them. So obviously, this is unprecedented. It's a word I think we've all really started to hate using, especially in light of everything coming forward that we just don't know. But starting beginning of April, the school departments work extremely close with the town administration to project where we are, where we're going. It took us a little longer to really fully understand where we would be because we had at least two potential start dates again. So there were many things that we needed to leave in place and couldn't start winding down until we really knew that we weren't going to be back in our school buildings. So in light of those discussions, when Daniel Donald and I were working, you know, almost on a daily basis, looking at how we were landing this year and into next year, you know, I really said that by not closing out a lot of our revenue at the end of the year will help the school department and the town next year by allowing us to have that flexibility to educate our students in the way we will need to without having to go back to the town for additional funds. And in light of the absolute stark reality, we'll have to make some adjustments to our twenty-one. So as we know, our budget isn't just funded by the general fund. That's obviously the largest piece. But we have another over three billion dollars that supplements our budget. And we depend on those funds to pay for everything that we need to make Westford Public Schools the district and the success that it is. Obviously, the largest piece of that three-plus million are the circuit breaker funds that we receive from the state for special education. I know I'm jumping really towards the end of my report without going through twenty and I will backtrack and go through it. But I just really need to emphasize that a lot of these decisions and the spending that we would normally use to fund our full twenty, we will not need to use all those offsets because we have realized a certain amount of cost savings by having to close the buildings. Obviously, that was heartbreaking and those were savings in quotes that we didn't really want to have. But there were areas that we didn't have to spend as much as we would normally in a normal school year. Substitute teachers, the daily substitute teachers. We still have a few teachers that are. We still have a few teachers that are out on maternity leave, so we are paying a long-term sum. But that's the replacement teacher for our students. Textbooks, related media, library, instructional equipment, and other instructional supplies. Those are savings because there's, you know, no one there to buy things for. But part of those savings are also a result of the spending freeze that we put into place at the beginning of January. Topic that we just covered, athletics and student activities. We are, um, like I said, it's much more actually on the coaching stipends because we unfortunately were not even able to start a spring's uh, sports season. And those coaching stipends are in the general fund budget, so we will be able to close out a certain amount there. And in utilities, uh, heating the buildings, electricity. While the buildings obviously were still had custodial support and some limited office support, um, we were able to turn down those thermostats, uh, toilets weren't flushed and uh, save some in utilities. And these numbers will continue to be refined, uh, particularly on utilities. Uh, the bills come in at different times, so um, those tend to cross fiscal years. And we'll just have to see, you know, what we end up paying in June versus ones that go on um, into the next uh, fiscal year. Uh, even though the, some of the, and because some of the costs will cover the two years. We saw a certain amount of savings in the teacher salary functions. Uh, the Department of Education now uh, combines function twenty-three oh five and twenty-three ten. Um, I'm working actually with the town to update our chart of accounts. It's a very complicated process and uh, but that'll, I think, uh, provide better clarity. Uh, there's, they're all teachers and um, really, there's no need uh, to segregate. We do see a balance there, but it's a, it's a balance that is there because we pay at least six salaries out of school choice. To almost four hundred thousand dollars that we pull out of school choice to support some of our teaching salaries. In function twenty-three ten, you will see a a negative. But part of that is every year we offset some of the special education staff costs with our um, two forty federal IDBA grant, which is for special education. And we take the salaries and need to fit them into the grant. So it varies year to year who is actually paid by the grant. I mean, uh, you know, a staff member would never know that their salary comes from a grant or from the budget. But uh, it it's a, you know, accounting. So some years, you know, it'll be four teachers from Westward Academy, two from Abbott, one from MAB. So that fluctuates, so that sometimes um, shows a negative, but it's not a true negative. It's just a negative from the general fund budget versus the funds are coming from another source. Um, transportation, that's a big one. We're still in negotiation with our vendors. Uh, I would love to give you a update on that, which I unfortunately don't have. Uh, we continue to discuss and um, require documentation for any um, yeah. Special education, uh, transportation was high this year. We're working on bidding out some of um, our special education transportation. Believe uh, right now, we're leaning towards trying to handle all the in-house special education transportation ourselves and um, contracting out the out-of-district uh, transportation. So Jed Piper and Courtney are working together and um, looking at that and doing some analysis. Maintenance, uh, as much as we would love to not see the negatives there, it is an area that we always fund our students first. And maintenance obviously supports our students, but it is an area that um, when you say you need to pay teachers to buy books, we do that first before we buy mops. But we do, um, our custodial staff does a fabulous job. Uh, we are starting to see the age of our buildings. I remember when many of our new schools were built, and we all still consider them new. But Stony Brook, Christopher Fuller Miller, they're nearing twenty years old now. And um, the furnaces are starting to go, the um, the cracks are starting to show some with the age. So uh, tho- those are all things that we need to start looking at more. Paul Fox is doing a great job at helping us prioritize uh, where where the most urgent needs are. And we're looking to to move more into the town capital plan to ensure proper planning for upgrading their buildings when necessary and covering the uh, if a boiler goes, that, you know, the the school budget doesn't cover it, that we utilize the capital plan as um, all the other town departments do. So as I I think we've done ad nauseam through the budget cycle this year, um, looking at circuit breaker and looking at our special education tuitions. It obviously has a huge impact on the budget. I have to give a huge shout out to Courtney Moran right now because with her absolute diligent tracking, when I looked at what we're actually going to spend on tuition this year, I think she was about of the five point four million dollars, twelve thousand dollars off, which is incredible with her projections. So um, that makes my life so much easier by having these just detailed, accurate uh, projections. So Courtney, you're an all-star. So I'm going to try to share my screen because I'm going to bring back an old favorite. Chris, it's telling me I can't.
Um, and like I said earlier, I'm on a different computer. I don't, I'm trying to see if I can enable you to be able to do that. I may not be able to. If you want to send me something I can share.
It's all right.
I'll keep trying. I apologize.
No, that's all right. Um, I'll just talk it through. So with special education tuition, if you look just at, you know, the straight projected uh, expenditures at the end of the year, you'll show, we'll we'll see that, you know, there's a uh, negative seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar deficit after um, our current, uh, last year's circuit breaker was applied. But keep in mind that when the budget was created for FY twenty, there were over seven hundred, it was seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of current year circuit breaker that was setting, um, offsetting those tuition payments. So that's basically that deficit. My goal, and I think the whole district's, and I hope yours, is not to have to use that seven hundred thousand dollars of current year circuit. I would say that some of the savings that we're realizing, um, with our schools being closed, we utilize those general funds to offset those tuition and areas that we are seeing a deficit, and that we save the current year circuit breaker. Now, I resurrected my arrows to show you that we would charge, it'll end up being about six hundred and twenty thousand dollars of special education tuitions charged to the budget that we normally would have paid for out of current year or had allocated to pay with current year circuit breaker. And remember, when the twenty budget was created, um, it was anticipated that we would receive two hundred thousand dollars of Valley Collaborative Credits that we did not receive. So there's another two hundred thousand, but um, I believe we received about sixty. So there's a hundred and forty thousand um, that we also basically lost that revenue. So I believe that with um, the closeouts that we will have, and like I said, we will keep refining these as we wind up the year. We can, in this model right now, I had to use two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of current year circuit breaker to balance. Um, that would lead us, you know, with an available balance of only four thousand dollars. Like I said, this has been in the discussion with Jody and Dan the whole time. And uh, obviously, this is something we can discuss. But I really think um, by not using as much circuit breaker, and the same with cer- school choice. We we have a lot, over six hundred thousand dollars of school choice offsets in our budget. I'm hoping that we only will need to use about four hundred and sixty thousand, which will leave us an additional two hundred thousand. Oops. Oh, two hundred thousand, uh, thank you, Chris. To be used next year. I mean, I would love it if we wouldn't have to use any of current year circuit breaker and could have it all. Because the more we have next year, the more that we can offset some of the budget shortfalls that we most certainly will have. Uh, right now, the selectmen are, um, I mean, I talked to Jody again today. They are not looking to cut the twenty-one budget at town meeting. They respect all the work that has gone into all the town departments. At this point, the legislature doesn't look like they will have their budget before August. So uh, Jody feels and the selectmen are agreeing that it would be premature just to cut budgets without truly knowing what our revenue um, from the state will be. That said, we're not just sitting around um, crossing our fingers. What we've decided to do is put together some high-level, uh, very high-level of budget adjustments, for lack of a better word, in in chunks. That if we have to cut five hundred thousand, this would, these would be the areas that we would cut. If we have to cut a million, it would be here, um, and one point five million. Jody, at this point, hopes and feels that we wouldn't have to go much further than that. Uh, those are huge numbers. I mean, we saw what discussion we had during this last budget cycle over, you know, fifteen thousand dollars. Again, uh, when talking to Dan O'Donnell, uh, the idea at the joint meeting next week that with you and the select board and the finance committee, that these budget reduction categories will be extremely high-level. We will not be identifying uh, specific positions at this point. Um, we will be in a larger area or or just as personal services. We have um, a wonderful supportive staff that uh, we do not want to start un- um, anticipated anxiety without really knowing. At this point, we don't know, as Kerry and Bill have told you at the beginning of the meeting, and we all know, we don't know what school's going to look like next year. Every model is different. You know, our current budget is built, was built last fall for in-school. You know, if we just go back to school. I think we can all agree that that's highly unlikely, that it'll just be the way it used to be. Fully remote would be a completely different budget scenario. If, you know, we just said, okay, FY or school year twenty twenty-one, the buildings will be closed and everyone will be educated remotely. Again, that's, doesn't sound like that would be likely or preferable. The hybrid model is the big unknown. Part of me, as as the finance person, hears Kerry, uh, Bill talk about, you know, oh, eighty-five percent will be told, will be told what that means and we'll have to do it. And, you know, I'm like, okay, well, there's a known, maybe we can cross that out. But even that extra fifteen percent will be different district by district. So I feel like I got off topic a little, but
Nope, you're good.
So the plan is, I mean, we are in constant communication with with um, our other town departments and Jody and Dan. I really, really, truly believe the the more we can bring over next year will help not only the school department, but the town as well. Uh, and I I think at that point, I'm just going to, yeah, yeah, answer any of your questions.
So committee, just um, to tag on to what Ingrid said, and thank you, Ingrid, for putting this very complete look together. It it is so nice to be able to take a look and see really, and have have a really good idea where we are. And um, I I know, I think we, I mean, thanks to your arrows before, we understand that we should save now on our circuit breakers so that we have it for next year. We we, I get that now, and I thank you very much for that. Um, committee, we will be establishing a finance subcommittee to work with Ingrid as these changes come up. Um, and so we'll probably cover that uh, the ne- at the next meeting when we do subcommittee assignments. Uh, but that is something that will be coming down the pike, so give that a thought. In the meantime, Andrea, uh, Perner Sweet and I are going to join the budget meeting just so the chairs have some idea as to what's going on in those discussions. So for the next week or two, Andrea and I will be joining in as we start to transition to a fi- an official finance subcommittee. So I hope that answers that. The um, but to answer Ming Chen, I think they are looking, but they're looking at an unknown. So they're sort of, I think, uh, somebody said that they're sort of throwing everything at the wall to see what's what's going to stick. And uh, it's going to be just a weekly process, daily process. Are there questions from the committee? I see Megan. I saw Megan first, then Alicia Ming Chen.
Okay, I'll try and be quick. You sure you want me to start? So I, thank you, Ingrid. I know this is a lot of work, um, everybody that's that's putting time into this. I I certainly understand there's a lot of unknowns, and we're trying to account for all of them and and make um, fiscally sound choices and decisions where we can. Um, I had a couple of questions that pertain to the buildings. So under telecommunications, um, you noted that there's been a dig- additional budgetary pressures due to telephone failures at some schools. And correct me if I'm wrong, and and you or Bill can probably answer this. I couldn't find the documents to pull up from capital planning, but this upcoming fiscal year was to be the year where the remaining schools that required upgrades were to be upgrade, their systems were to be upgraded. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And so are these um, additional failures i- in conjunction, would you say they're related to the schools that are still in need of updates?
No, I mean, these were, you know, WA went down for quite a period, and we kind of had to band-aid it and before the capital um, funds came through.
Okay.
Uh, most of these were Band-Aid costs. I would classify them that way.
You know, there there were significant phone issues uh, at WA in the early part of the year for for at least a couple of months.
Okay. Um, and then my second question about the buildings was um, with regards to maintenance. To your point, Ingrid, I know the schools that we refer to as new, and I still do, are not so new anymore, and I certainly understand that. But we also um, often refer to the fact that we take great pride in the fact that our schools are so well-maintained and some of the cleanest in our community. So I wanted to specifically ask about, um, I believe there was a, hold on, let me find it. A pest control charge of forty-five thousand, was that district-wide? A couple of schools, a school, you don't have to tell me which, because I'm sure people don't know. Um, but I, it, yes, it was district-wide?
That's district-wide, and that really is a cost that um, is reoccurring. You know, that's the spraying, every, you know, the, it's it's a normal, it's not extraordinary. Let's just say, it's not extraordinary. This is a normal service.
And in of that magnitude of cost.
Right. And and, you know, I think what I would like to see is that we start, you know, budgeting for that as much as we can. I, you know, we we tried this year, and, you know, as things got tighter and tighter, maintenance kept getting whittled. So I think, you know, that that's just an area, they're costs that we have.
Yeah, may I just add to that, that each year the state requires us to file what's called the integrated pest management plan for each school building. And that plan requires us to document what type of insects or wildlife we find in our buildings. I have to say, somewhat humorously, about 30 years ago, there was actually a cow in the hallway of the Robinson School that we had to have removed. But we have to identify every type of insect that has observed. We have to obey strict guidelines in terms of insecticides that we use. And they're very strict guidelines. Those have been in place for about 15 to 20 years. And we've known that the cost of that would be a significant impact to the school system.
Okay, with regards to the page that has line items by function, Ingrid?
Yep.
We'd go to that for a minute. So one question I had was about, I know you referenced that we're still in negotiations with transportation, but obviously, that's an enormous expense. And what's listed here of the year-to-date expense is quite a lot of that, of the budgeted amount. Is that number reflective of? What is that number reflective of with our percentage paid out or what we're negotiating?
Yep. So that only reflects what we spent. So we had spent over 100, sorry. 100 and 120, sorry, now my pages are messed up. In special education, transportation, that was an area that really did incur a high cost overage this year. So that number is in there, our regular bus transportation, but again, only what we've spent. On the other side, I did release some of the funds. We're not going to spend, unless the committee so directs, 100% of what was left in our transportation obligations.
So I'm not sure I understand. I'm sorry. So in 300, what's the year-to-date expended of the 2.9-ish million budget is 2.3. We have spent that prior to the closure. That's what I just want to clarify for people. And so the projected expense left, the 593, would be if we were to pay the remainder of this contract at 100%.
No.
Oh, at 45?
That's at a percent, yes.
Okay. Okay, but we, but they have not agreed to that. So that's
But
Okay.
So the projected expenditure, that third column?
That's a projection.
That's a projection of what we're still going to spend. So the 68 that you list on page two and on this page, that's going to be left would include a portion of the contract being paid to close out the year.
It would include the, so the 593, and I'm sorry, and I'm happy next time to provide a little more clarity in this area. It is complicated, but we are still in negotiations, so I didn't.
I understand. We don't want to, yeah.
So the 593,000 that I have as a projected expense still, that would be what I project at this point if we hit the target of our negotiations for our transportation vendors.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
And then that that 68 would be what would be left.
Okay.
Also paying special ed out of this line, the special ed transportation? And is that being paid at 100% or is that negotiated as well?
That's being negotiated as well.
Okay. Sorry, Megan.
That's okay. My last question, and then I know everybody has questions. I'll turn it over. Line item for custodial services, 4110.
Yep.
If you could just speak to, so I know, obviously, we closed the buildings in March, but there were costs incurred, certainly, that we did not expect with regards to custodial services and the cleaning of the buildings. The the projected expenditure left, can you, I guess, can you just talk to for a moment? What is happening in the buildings now with nobody there? Where is that projected expense of 202 coming from? And is that, I assume, I didn't look back at our FY21 budget for what we have included, but I would assume that that is one area where we could probably expect quite a jump, depending on what the return to school looks like, and have, are we adjusting that to project for additional expenses in the fall in FY21?
Well, keep in mind, these projections are for 20.
Right. Oh, I understand. No, I know that.
Yes, yes. So in that line, I mean, that majority of those are salaries for all our custodian staff.
Okay.
There are the extra cleaning expenses that we had during the closure, especially during the early closure, when we released, sterilized the schools in hopes that the schools would be able to be reopened. All those COVID-19 specific costs are being tracked and will be submitted for female reimbursement.
Okay.
And then also in this line, in that 200,000, 202,000 are the custodial supplies that we traditionally buy at this time of year for the summer and next year.
Okay. And you don't see that needing to be adjusted to reflect additional supplies for next year?
We, we have money in next year's budget as of right now. Again, that is something that we will look at very closely as we wind down. And if there are, if it makes sense to buy additional supplies now.
And last question, I know that you have been tracking expenses related to, specifically to COVID that we think may be possible for reimbursement. Is that something, not necessarily even the number, but sort of categorically, that we could have at the next meeting? Just a reference list of the kinds of expenses that are being tracked so that we can see the potential magnitude of what that might look like?
Well, it's funny, because I literally was working on that today, because the window for reimbursement for FY20 on the municipal side of the CARES Act opens on Friday. We originally thought it was due on Friday, but Dan realized that the portal just opens on Friday, but we are tracking not only, in FY20, the vast majority of our costs had to do with the cleaning of the buildings. There were about $10,000 of additional costs with technology. Carrie had submitted some translation costs, communication costs. Yeah, mostly, I would say, technology and communications, you know, as we all moved to not only teaching remotely, but working remotely, we needed some equipment. But really, and that's the discussion I've been having with Dan as well, is so on the municipal side of the CARES Act, it looks like right now Westford is eligible for about $2.4 million reimbursement, potentially. And again, potentially, you know me, until we actually see the money. And one of the categories, and that covers not only what, you know, we would call the town side, it covers the town, which includes the schools. So it would include any costs that we have regarding special education, that compensatory services and such. Next year, are things that we have to deal with with our students that could be linked to a direct result of the school's closing or continuing in some remote fashion next year.
Ingrid, may I just say for one second, I think the number is 2.14 million.
Right. So that, but, but, but those costs would be for 21. So there's a 20 window that we're dealing with right now. We spent about $40,000 in cleaning supplies and about another 10,000 on the telecommunication technology side. The vast majority of our submissions, we anticipate both on the town and school side to be in 21.
Okay. And I guess the last question about that, and I think I had included this in an email, is with the capital expenditure being approved recently to go ahead and purchase the freshman Chromebooks, if we are in a completely remote situation, would that cost potentially qualify as as a reimbursement to have everyone access the curriculum?
Well, I believe our, we talked about it with Jody and Dan, and I believe our consensus was we'll try.
Okay.
The funds, you know, they're not supposed to supplant funds that we normally would spend.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I think Alicia had a question, and then Ming Chen had a question.
So Megan already got my first question about tracking for COVID reimbursement, so thank you for that. So Ingrid, I wanted to follow up to a follow-up. I had followed up with you last week about the school department's participation in the townwide audit, and you told me that because of where you couldn't get into the offices and the limited staff getting into the offices, that you were working on a draft for last week. Clearly, this is overwhelming, the fiscal year 20 budget meshing with the 21 budget. Is that still something you feel like your office can handle, or is that something we need to bring in an outside auditor for so that we can be compliant with what the town has asked for?
Well, I mean, the town is asking for us to submit, you know, our best guess of how things were handled. That's what they did on their side, and then are looking at the processes moving forward. I did, I'm happy to announce, I did pass my MCPPO first training, three days. It was very comprehensive, so.
Congratulations.
There's more, but
Isn't there always?
There always is. Honestly, it's just, it's, we're down two staff. We have one out of bereavement and one that's just, we need to still fill, so. I hate being the bottleneck. But I think what, I talked to Eric Hydeman too, and I think what we're going to do is submit a the vast majority of the items on our list are 100% compliant and don't need further investigation. So I think we're going to submit that and then chip away at the ones that we need to investigate a little more.
Is this specific procurement, or is this a general audit?
No, procurement.
Okay.
But so what they did is, is just pulled every expense over $10,000. And as Courtney can attest, between food service and special education, that's the vast majority. And I saw on the agenda, you have Colleen's food service bids, which are all those properly procured. It wasn't a judgment call, was it, you know, questioning, it was just they pulled every purchase that was made over $10,000.
Okay.
So as you can see, it's just waiting for them all.
Alicia, did you have more questions, or can I go to Ming Chen? All right, Ming Chen, you had a question.
My internet is really sketchy, so if you see me frozen, then just move on. So I'm looking at the numbers, so and then on the school choice, in both accounts, we improve our position quite a bit from the projected F1 2021 budget.
Yes.
Is that correct? So looks like the 600,000, and the school choice would be 200,000.
Right.
So that's $800,000 improvement from the budget projected for FY21. So does that mean that we are able to to be able to release $800,000 from the general fund?
Sorry. Sorry, you cut out.
Okay. So now our position improved by $800,000, $800,000 in a developer back in, what, January, February? For FY21. Okay.
So we also, we also, just sorry to interrupt, had requested and put in the report, just to remind us all. I know Gloria worked very hard on it, the $400,000 supplemental. So that's you know, that's right now on the fall town meeting schedule. So I think we need to be realistic about that.
Okay.
Maybe not happening.
All right. So for the $800,000, we're just going to for the, for the circuit breaker, we're going to, what, return that money back?
Now, we, we will apply it to our special education tuition.
Okay. One question is that with the wizard, with the state finance in a down situation, do we already have the circuit breaker reimbursement come back, or we still have to file for it? And then do we expect the circuit breaker amount, reimburse amount is going to go down?
Yes, we have to apply for it. Courtney's office works very hard at tracking and submitting that. It's quite an onerous job. At this point, we are hearing that they are planning to fund circuit breaker. They had hoped through the Student Opportunity Act to add special education, 25% of our special education costs to that. I would be shocked if that even was discussed.
Okay.
But we did not, but we did not budget for that 25% reimbursement.
All right. I think the internet is very sketchy. My question mostly is about like, how much we're expecting from the circuit breaker reimbursement?
So next year, well, this year, we received 1.8 million. Our costs have gone up. Or Courtney, would you say the reimbursements this year are similar?
I would think it's going to be similar. It might go up a little bit, but the wild card will be the percentage that the state is offering to reimburse. So at the beginning of the year, they were saying, we're going to reimburse you at 75%. And then, as Ingrid just alluded to, we were able to pull in our special education transportation. There's going to be training on circuit breaker, some of the new updates coming in next week that both Ingrid and I will be attending, and we'll see what exactly the number looks like. But that final number is usually contingent on the governor's budget, and we know where that stands right now, so it might be a little bit of time.
Can I just clarify? I don't know if it's, it's part of the, the circuit breaker, Ming Chen, remember, we're trying not to use current year, we're trying to only use last year's as we're required to and hold on to as much as this year's for next year. So we're trying to basically pay ourselves back so that we have the money to move forward. Am I right, Ingrid?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. That's the $600,000 saving we have hers.
Right. I mean, there are so many unknowns with special education. One student moving into the district that's already in an outside placement, we could own that. We've started the year and automatically have had over $100,000 worth of tuition that we didn't plan for because the students weren't ours until they enrolled, and then we just had to assume those costs. So it kind of depends on how that pendulum is swinging.
You know, throughout this report, if I could just point out, one of the things that Ingrid has consistently mentioned and noted is the need to maintain a robust school choice and circuit breaker balance, because that's the only way that we can leverage our financial position from one fiscal year to the next. And that's extraordinarily important. And so I applaud her for doing an excellent job on that.
Well, and of course, you know, it kills me just even using that 200, 250,000 right now that I'm projecting. So that's my goal, is to whittle that down and so that we can use that. I don't know if that's possible, but you know, those are the sort of things as we close out the year, we look at. And how much we, and I think particularly this year, going into next year, it's really critical. As much as we can bring over into next year, it will help, like I said, us as a department and us as a town.
Okay. Any other finance questions before we move on? And I know this is going to be a work in progress. It's going to sort of be an every, every meeting agenda item. Chris, I see a hand up.
Yeah, could we just briefly hear about the, what's in the 150K that's projected to be spent for professional development for the remainder of the year?
Carrie?
Yep. So for the
Yep, so for the professional development, at this point, um we don't plan to exhaust all of those funds. When we budget, we're always uncertain if Title II A grant monies will come in and that is specific for professional development. So a lot of times we have leftover money in that account if we do get the funding from Title II that we hope for each year. But we can't necessarily depend on that fully um when we build the budget in October, November, December time because the grants aren't released until July or August.
And I believe there's still some stipends that um need to be paid out, right?
Yes, right, for mentor mentees.
Right. So that falls in that category.
Okay, thank you.
Oh Gloria, go ahead.
Um yeah, I just, a a lot of my questions have already been asked. Thanks for everybody for being thorough. Um I guess I just wanna uh reiterate some of some of Megan's comments that I it sounds like a lot of the the overruns that we're discussing in the the maintenance budget are things that we do know we're gonna have year to year. And and i- if we know, for example, like the pest control expense, i- is an expense that we're going to have year to year. Um anything we can do to to budget for that and include that in our budget, I think helps with with clarity um for us looking at the budget and for our town partners on select board and and FinCom. The the more we can do to to fund that line item appropriately, I I think helps um going forward. Um I also um appreciate Ingrid, all of your efforts to to try to um hang on to those current year circuit breaker funds. Um anything we can do to to get ourselves um back on track and and really have that that flexibility and the stability in uh that circuit breaker going forward is is super important. And just want to echo that, you know, that we appreciate that when we were very concerned about those line items this spring, that we did receive um uh unanimous support from the Board of Selectmen and uh FinCom um to help us with those. Um if if some of the cost savings this spring are are enabling enabling us to lessen that need. Um I think that helps both the the town and schools um going forward into FY twenty one. So thank you for all of your efforts on that, Ingrid.
Okay, any other finance? We are behind schedule and I am aware of that. Um if there are no other questions, I thank you, Ingrid, and uh we will continue. As I said, this will become a a regular agenda item.
No, no, and I I I was going to suggest, and I I do, A, I thank you very much for um putting together a finance subcommittee. I think it it will help with um just understanding. Um I think as much as I can talk about it and and Bill and Carrie and Courtney, I think it's hearing from your peers. Um you know, everyone learns differently, so um having more people explain and understand, I think, really will be extremely helpful. And um you know, it if it would help, but not uh I I would be very happy to do uh moving forward, you know, financial updates as we close the year.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's evaluation. Um I do need to give a shout out and thank you to Megan for distributing and compiling all of the data. Um the DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, had outlined a new superintendent evaluation uh this last year. And so it was a little more of a a process this year as we got used to the new rubric. Um when I was looking at the DESI website, it said that conducting a thorough, fair, and useful evaluation of the superintendent is both important and challenging. Uh and I think that at this point, the school committee would agree. Uh it is very important and it is also very challenging. We also agreed that it has been and continues to be a very strange and difficult year um on multiple fronts. I'm not going to, and I'm gonna ask the committee not to go over the evaluation line by line. I don't think that there's a need for that. Uh there was some some and significant progress in all three areas for the superintendent. The evaluation is in the packet for the public to read. Um and each of us completed this evaluation using that new DESI um rubric. Additionally, I'd like to say that some people I've come to understand missed the announcement uh last month that the committee and the superintendent have reached a one-year agreement. Uh we we that we reached that at the end of April. The contract is now fully executed and will be posted on the district website uh tomorrow. The contact stipulates the retirement of the superintendent in June of twenty one. We are focusing our efforts on remote learning, getting the school year closed, and assessing, as we just heard, the financial implications of the pandemic. We will be outlining a superintendent search process in the coming months, and it will likely begin in July due to the remote nature. And there will be plenty of opportunity for public to participate in the process. Um so I'm not sure that we wanna go around um to comment on this because we are running late on time. But I do want to thank all of you for really putting a lot of thought and effort into the evaluation. It was it was a different, it was a very different process this year with with the way. And thank you, Bill, for all of your goals. That was a lot of of uh data to try to compile um and get all your goals into the right rubric. So thank you for for uh helping us along in that part of it. Um any other?
We'll make a comment.
Absolutely.
And I'm I'm not gonna get into at all debate with you. I have no intention of doing it. But um you know, for forty nine years, I've had forty eight excellent evaluations. And uh this is the first unsatisfactory evaluation that I've ever had. Something's wrong here and needs to be fixed. And um I think some questions need to be asked in terms of how we've arrived at this point between the statements made on February tenth and now this document, which essentially is a reiteration of that, which I do not agree with. Nobody is perfect. And I will say to you and I will say to the public um that uh I need to improve on my timeliness of communication and my frequency of communication. But I don't agree with the comments on the budget, on fifth grade camp, on start times, on uh redistricting. I have a a very, very different perspective, uh I think supported by information and data uh on those. I I think in in some instances, it seemed to be the con- some of the comments seem to be mean spirited and disrespectful and condescending. I know I I I do want to point out just just as an example, because this one really, this one very much angry. As a person who has a lot of pride, who has helped lead the school system to be considered the best school system in the state. And this is an example of of what concerns me deeply is your comment that in in October, a joint meeting with leadership and school committee was completely ineffective through the superintendent's ground rules. Well, my ground rules were that the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the financial landscape, and I don't identify elements of a high-performing school district and establish priorities and discuss where we need to go with those priorities. So I'm in complete disagreement that it was in that it was a completely ineffective meeting because of my ground rules. There were comments throughout the throughout the evaluation that said the budget did not reflect a shared vision, a mission, the goals. I work very hard with our administrative team and with our staff. I meet with the staff of every school in understanding what the needs of the children of our school district are and putting together a budget based on that. What I heard this year from the staff unanimously was we need to do a far better job uh in terms of addressing the social, emotional needs. There were comments in there that I showed little or no initiative in these school start times. That's completely false. I met with Jim Antonelli and Dan Toomey numerous times. Well, because they were members of the Citizens Advisory Committee. Met with the bus company numerous times to talk about finances, what it would cost. We built into the fiscal twenty one budget a two-tier system for revised school start times. I met with the leadership, Carrie and Ingrid and Courtney and the entire leadership to extensively flush out different models. Gloria, you met with a few suggestive models uh on one occasion that that had the youngest children going first, which which most of the sleep studies would indicate is necessary. So to say, to make those comments, that there was little or no admission is false. The the issue, once again, I'm not gonna believe at this point, but I need to make these points. Because something is definitely wrong in terms of the redistricting. I wanted to display to you and the public all of the work that we had done. And the comments in February and in in this evaluation noted the system-wide anxiety that was created. Well, first of all, any mention of redistricting causes anxiety. But I went back to my emails that are all archived. I had three phone calls and four emails out of over four thousand parents. I don't consider that system or anxiety create fifth grade camp. You were critical that I did not support Carrie. Carrie reviewed the plan with me and I supported that, but we had a meeting with December. And you were there with me with about forty parents, Patty Mason, Rose O'Donnell, Leslie Thomas and others, strong supporters of the school system for many years, imploring the change that was ultimately made to fifth grade camp. But you were more concerned about my not supporting the original plan than listening to the parents, and that's my job. So throughout this evaluation, which resulted, once again, in the first negative evaluation I I've ever had, I have absolute strong differences of opinion with you. Now, I'd like to work those out with you, okay? Because I don't want to see this continue. I think there has been a continued disparaging of me. I honestly think, and please, I mean this in all sincerity to you, you are all good people. But I think, very strongly think, you began to dismiss me as the superintendent about nine or ten months ago. One of the most respected administrators in our office, who I work with, made a comment to me about four months ago, five months ago now, that said, and she stated that I think there's an effort to credit you. And I said, I know, because I felt it. And I felt it in our communications, Avery, between you and I. I'm not gonna get into it. Okay, but there have been some untruthful things said. And I don't like it, people. I don't like it. Because I think I've been treated very unfairly. I think it's all been rooted in the fact that you wanted to make a change in the superintendency. That's your prerogative. And I understand that, and that happens in different school systems across the country. But there are two ways to go about that. What most committees, even in Westford, would do would say, doing a long-time, very successful staff member is we know you're approaching retirement. We'd like to sit down with you and talk about your needs and your horizon, and we'd like to convey to you what's important to us. I would have sat down with you to do that. There was absolutely no offer to do that, none. There was no conversation with me, zero. The other, the other road, an alternative that you made a conscious and intentional decision to make is to enter into that document that was read that I heard for the first time also, in addition to the public, on February tenth. Now, I'm not here to give you a tongue lesson. When something like this happens to me, to a person who has given so many years of excellent service to the school system, has helped lead us to be considered the best school system in Massachusetts, and I'm treated like this this past year, something is wrong, and I will make no more comment about it.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me.
I I look forward to uh working on that mediation and and seeing, hoping that we can get to a a level ground.
I hope so. I hope so.
So thank you. Um I think we're gonna move on to, I I I'm a little confused by the next item, Bill. Um it says school committee meeting schedule, but there was none included. Um I think that's gonna be tabled for another meeting.
That's correct. On my agenda, it is crossed out and said hold until uh six fifteen.
Okay, um the one I think in the packet may still have it. Um the only note I would like to make to it is that um I think I mentioned to you uh last week, I I I foresee the school committee needing to meet over the summer um as these financial and programmatic, any of these changes. So um and and so that sort of goes to the warrant as well. Um we'll cover uh if not every other week, i- it's some regular interval over the summer. And so I just wanted to put that out there for the committee. Yep.
Avery, I certainly respect your request to do so, and Bill, I respect your statement. But as the secretary, I just wonder if I could point out just a few things, nothing related to specific comments, but about the fact that the evaluation is a different format and for the public to understand the intent of the summative evaluation process. And it's up to you if you if you would allow me to share that, but it's nothing subjective or related to those statements. I just feel that it is only fair to the committee that we get to put into context the the framework and purpose of that evaluation.
It I mean, it is a new rubric um that did the it did have us looking at things differently and looked for a lot of supporting documentation. It looked for markers. Um I think those are the sort of things, like, you know, the goals needed to be smart goals that were of of it, you know, had some criteria to them. Is that what you're referring to, Megan?
Well, it is, and and just the fact that the intent of any annual summative evaluation, whether it's for a superintendent or another administrator or any school employee, is that it be objective and evidence-based. Otherwise, it's it defeats the purpose. They're they're not meant to be evaluations on someone personally or on longevity in the in the system or anything like that. They're done on an annual basis to reflect the performance of the past year and.
And may I just say, um I don't care what the process is and what the rubric is. My argument is based on the evidence, and what I possess for evidence is greatly different from what is reflected in my evaluation.
And that's where I don't I don't want it to to become this back and forth tonight.
I have no intention of that. I have no intention of that.
Some of the things that we need to talk about in a mediation, you know, when we sit down, hopefully over the summer in person, that we can sit down and talk about some of these things.
Looking forward to it.
Um so the school meeting schedule, I assume we are, we're gonna table that. Um but just note that I I believe we will be adding some summer schedule dates to that. Questions on that, on the meeting schedule, committee, nothing? I mean, I think it's just our regular schedule, and and Nina does a great job lining it up with the warrants. Contract, I I this is good news. The MOAs for C and G. And I believe, Bill, is it, do we have another one too?
Well, not for tonight, but uh late this afternoon, we were notified that um Unit B, which is the coordinators and um student support leaders uh have agreed essentially to a two percent COLA. Okay, and holding the stipends constant, so that will be ready for the next meeting.
Okay. Okay. So at this time, all open units are now agreed to follow Unit A with a 2% COLA, no language, no stipend changes, and we will reopen negotiations sometime later in the fall to finish the process that we started?
That's correct. Probably earlier in the fall.
Yes. So we don't have B, but I do need a motion to approve C and B, or no, C and, sorry, with the agreed-upon COLA, which is also what the town has outlined as the COLA for next year in their negotiations.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just like the Unit A contract, which we approved for 2% COLA, given the uncertainties, I think when we, after approval, we may, we may need to revisit in September, depends on how much, what a budget will look like. I don't know if that's necessary, but that's a possibility.
Do we have, is what a possibility? Sorry.
I say that depends on how much impact to the budget the state reduction is, and then the reduction to the school operating budget. There is a possibility that we approve all the union contracts, but back in September, then we have, probably have to make a decision regarding staff layoffs versus freeze the COLA with the union. There is a possibility to, in order for the school district to operate.
And may I say, I think if there is such a discussion, it needs to be on a townwide basis, because in our weekly budget meetings now with town manager and the finance director, we did ask Jody again last week about the commitment to 2%, and that is still a solid commitment on a townwide basis.
So are there any other questions on Units C and G? And next week, we will vote on B.
That's correct.
Right now, it's C and G to follow suit with the Unit A that has already been approved. Do I have a motion to, I'll have to be signing, I'll have to be signing that MOA if we approve it tonight.
There a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of Units C and G MOA. Chris?
Hi.
Alicia?
Hi.
Megan?
Hi.
Gloria?
Hi.
Sean?
Hi.
Ming Chen?
Hi.
Thank you. And I, so it's a unanimous pass of C and G.
Thank you.
Summer warrants, we need to elect a signatory who can presumably go in, or as I've been doing, get and scan to, back to Ingrid. Is that process able to continue, Ingrid, or once the building is open, is it better to just come in?
I mean, it's easy to scan, and we are looking into DocuSign for, you know, some remote signatories to, just to ease this process moving forward as well.
Yep. I'm trying to answer that question, is that when are we going to switch to e-signatories?
Yeah.
Save us money on the paper.
Yeah, no, we're just trying to, I'm just trying to identify who within the whole district would benefit from it, because you pay by, you know, signatory.
Is anyone interested in being the signator? And if not, I am happy to stay on, since Ingrid and I sort of have this dance down at this point on signing and moving on. And I suspect that some of our meetings, we will try to have them line up with the warrants as well, so we can do that as we move through the summer.
I was going to offer to take your place, but I will let you, I'll let it be chair's privilege as to decide which of us does that.
It doesn't matter. I have my scanner now, I'm good and...
Well, it might be good to have a backup, you know, it's always good.
I absolutely think we should have a backup. So am I primary, Chris is backup?
Sure.
So motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Ming Chen. You're muted.
I'm muted. Aye.
Thank you. Sean?
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
Alicia?
Hi.
Megan?
Hi.
Chris?
Aye.
Okay. So we will get people paid through the summer. Food service bid, I'm not sure who's, I mean, they're in the packet, and I don't know if there's questions, if we want to bring Colleen. Go ahead.
So, given the unsettled nature of next school year and also the COVID-19 virus, do we know how many kids are still going to participate in the food program? And now, I saw all those Bs and the way that's all those amounts, so do we really need to actually be so much, so much food? Or should we actually reduce our food bid?
Well, we bid oftentimes Ming Chen through collaborators, purchasing collaborators, so it really doesn't make much difference in terms of the volume or the amount of food used. You know, what you're approving is the per-unit cost, and the vendors understand that the uncertainty involved here. But these are standard bids, we won't be penalized one way or another, whether there's, you know, 10 children or, you know, 5,000 children eating in our school lunch program. So, you know, my recommendation would certainly be to approve the bid, because there's no downside to approving it.
So basically, it's per unit cost, and then if we, if we eat less, then we pay less?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. We have to have someone to order from.
Okay.
That's right.
That's part of the procurement process.
Right.
So this is the right, you know, this is how you want to do it.
Okay.
Would it be helpful, do you want me to read all of the vendors? And once we read them all, someone can make a motion to approve all vendors as indicated in Colleen's memo?
I don't think we need to read about the vendors, right? Do we, do we have to?
We generally have not.
Okay. Then that's fine, I won't read them all. So I'm looking for a motion to approve recommended vendors in, per Colleen Wallace's May 27th memo.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Ming Chen?
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye. So it's a unanimous food services.
Okay, Avery, you're a little frozen, but let's move on to the warrant approvals. Let me pull it up. Motion to approve payroll warrant 2049 SP dated June 4, 2020, in the amount of $2,379,289.93.
Second.
Avery is still frozen. Let's roll call this. Gloria, we're going to roll call on the payroll warrant approval.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye. Thank you.
Aye. Okay, next one. It is expense warrant 2049 SE dated June 4, 2020, in the amount of $666,892.21.
Second.
Okay, Gloria?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Motion to approve May 4 regular session meeting minutes. All in favor. Ming Chen?
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye, so that's a unanimous, all in favor, motion to approve May 5 joint select board school committee minutes.
Second.
All in favor. Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Okay. Megan, did we have another one in the packet?
Yes, we did, January 31st, please, regular session minutes. Motion to approve January 31st regular session minutes.
Second.
Okay. All in favor. Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Okay. So now we're on executive session minutes, and I realize that there is executive session public release, executive session not to be released. And I did receive an email ahead of time on the executive sessions, and I just want to sort of give a quick overview. Executive sessions are the confidential meetings that the school committee and the superintendent, assistant superintendent have on various issues. There are nine specific rules as to why you can take an executive session. And so what we are doing tonight is approving a set of them, and then at the following meeting, on our meeting in two weeks, we will be releasing those that can be released. But we will, those can be released after an issue has been deemed resolved, and so I will seek legal counsel just to verify that we can release these things. But anything having to do with personnel would not be released. So I have a list. Thank you, Megan and Chris, for getting all of these executive sessions. Megan, just double-check that I have them as I read them off, that these are the ones in the...
Avery, just to clarify what you just said, though, you had stated that anything related to personnel would not be released. That would be potentially different for non-union personnel.
Sorry, yes, union personnel.
Thank you for that clarification.
Correct. Sorry about that. If you can just follow along, these are, again, these are, we are just approving those. These do not mean that they are released to the public at this time. So I have February 3, February 6, February 10, February 13, February 20, February 27, March 3, March 6, March 30, April 2, April 6, and April 13. Is that correct?
That is the list that I have as well, yes.
Okay. So those were all moved to the secure, the Google Drive for all of us to see, but those are not public in the packet. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So roll call. Ming Chen?
So it's approved to be released?
No, it is approved. We are, we will determine with legal counsel which ones can be released at a future meeting, hopefully in two weeks. These are just to approve the minutes as recorded.
Okay, I see. Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
Megan?
Before you go in, can I just ask, so you're actually approving these for not for release at this time, and then you will go back? So the motion will say you're approving not for release.
Not for release, yes, thank you. And next week, or next meeting, we hope to have some that would be able to be released because the issue would have been resolved. So these are approval not to be released. I think we're up. Megan?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So those, so 12 sessions have been approved not to be released. And thank you again, Megan and Chris, for corralling all of those. With no other questions, Chris, I believe, if you want to...
Sure. Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to Unit B collective bargaining, and an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position, and to discuss strategy with respect to non-union 2021 salaries, and an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. The committee will not return to public session.
Question for Bill, do we still need a strategy for Unit B since that was...
Okay. No, we don't.
Sorry, I should have said that before, but as you were saying it, I was like, wait, we don't need that. So we will only be adjourning to discuss with respect to exempt and administrative non-union personnel.
Thank you.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Roll call. Ming Chen?
Aye.
Gloria? I saw you say aye. Megan?
Aye.
Alicia?
Yeah, okay.
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye. And I believe there is a separate link in our mailbox. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks. Good night, all.